Thank you, Inez. I'd like to move on according to the agenda. And anyone here that needs a copy of the agenda, you should be able to find it on the Farmington website. We'll begin with new business. And commissioners, as we have been doing, we will vote on each of these businesses, each piece of business individually as it's completed. We'll begin with Laurentano Sign Group sign application for property located at 79 Main Street. That's 79 Main Street in Unionville, correct?
Can I please ask if the representative for Laurentano Sign Group is here? And if they are, to raise their hand electronically so that we can unmute you. Okay. Which one is that one?
Allison. Is that your name? I don't see her. Very top. That's also a very top phone number.
Do I have to remote the hands? Allison, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're a little light on the volume. Can you see the images on screen, Allison?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I'll let you start with your presentation, and you can tell me which slide to skip to if you'd like.
Yes, absolutely. So this is for the Ion Bank signage. What you're looking at here is a proposed wall sign at 33.18 square feet. And it has exterior up lighting below the signage.
Excuse me, Mark, this is so hard to hear. Anything we can do?
Yeah, Allison, we're going to have to ask you to speak up.
Is that better?
I'm afraid not. Would you like me to repeat what she's saying?
Let's see if she can get her volume up.
Yeah, I have it all the way up. I'm trying to see where the speaker is on my computer.
You look for your microphone. I'm sorry.
Is that better?
How about the commissioners? Can you hear?
Yes, I can, but there's somebody sort of wrestling people. It's disturbing.
All right, can you hear me?
That's better, Allison. Let's try it again.
Okay. What you're looking at on the screen is the proposed wall sign for Ion Bank at 33.18 square feet with exterior up lighting. And if you look at the top where it's showing the exterior lighting, has the dimmable capabilities for the lighting as well. And then if you skip to this next sign. Yep. And this is for a proposed ground sign with an overall height of five feet 11 inches at 24.5 square feet. And this also has exterior lighting with dimmable capabilities.
Commissioners, you have questions to ask?
This is Inez St. James. The first picture that we looked at or planned, is that facing the street?
Main Street.
That's what you would see when you are on Main Street, looking at the bank?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the second sign, can you help me understand the location? Route 4, as you know, is, especially in that section, is very heavily traveled. Will it obstruct traffic? I'm trying to understand the location of this brick sign.
No, it will be set back per the regulations. I'm looking to see where the site plan is.
I'm afraid I don't have the site plan, unfortunately.
When we are pulling out, is it going to be on the left or right?
It's going to be on the right pulling out.
It's on the right side.
Let me touch.
So when you're coming down Main Street, building, it'll be before the building on the right.
Can I?
I do have a site plan.
Yeah, I apologize for not putting it up, but I can explain where it is.
Thank you.
It is set back the appropriate distance from the road as required by your regulations in close proximity to the entrance drive for the bank. It is on the bridge side, the Farmington River Bridge side, if you will. Two bridges in close proximity there.
It is further.
On the east side.
Yes, further away from the center of Unionville, on that side of the driveway.
So like what Commissioner, well Chair Brenneman said, when you're pulling out of this business, it's going to be on our right?
Yes.
Okay.
Pulling out of the driveway, onto Route 4, the sign will be on the right, in front of the building, correct?
No, I thought it was on the left.
Which side of the driveway, Allison, is this sign on?
If you're pulling out.
If you're pulling out of the bank?
Yes.
It'll be on the left.
There is an, this is Marcy Schwartz. So there is an entrance driveway and then an exit driveway, correct? And this is between the two of them.
No. My apologies to the commission for not including this slide. It was an oversight on my part. There's a single shared drive for the law offices and the bank. If you remember, during the presentation, we required that they put a berm in front of the bank with some additional plantings to help screen lighting from the properties across the street, particularly lighting emanating from the drive-through. Therefore, the sign has to go, not as you're driving out, not on the right, because then it's going to be in the landscaping, but on the left, immediately to the left of the driveway as you're pulling out. And it is located inside the property line, it's not out on the street.
But then there's the sidewalk between where the sign is and the, and where the road.
Correct, Mark.
Okay, great.
This is Matt Pogson. I have a question. Is the sign, where is the sign located compared to the existing sign for the law office?
I'd have to get the site plan for you, Matt. If you want, you guys can continue this, and I'll take my leave. Go up and get, you know, wow. I'll have to find that implanted in the file.
I just think that that might be important.
Unfortunately, I can't be in.
It should have been in the package, I forgot.
There's site plan?
Yeah.
It should have been in the package.
It wasn't in the package that you received?
I didn't see it, but I can look at.
Yeah, double check, please.
Because I can't be here moving this thing around.
This is new that we got today.
Oh, that's right.
But the original had it.
Son of a gun, I took it out, I should have left it in. Took the old ones out and I replaced them with the new ones. Yeah, absolutely did.
Allison, while Matt looks for that, would you answer a question for me? Did you say that was up lighting, not down lighting on the sign? And if so, why up lighting?
Exterior lighting on the wall sign is below the sign. So the lighting will light up the Ion Bank.
So why up lighting rather than down lighting?
And with the overhang, it keeps the light pollution to a minimal and doesn't allow shadows.
Again, this is Barbara. Do you have a measurement on that fixture?
Two four-foot length.
Thank you.
If you look here, Barbara, each fixture is four feet long.
And it's LED dimmable, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Matt, did you have any luck finding?
I did, Barbara. I'm having a very difficult time, though. It's very light colored where the writing is in front of the law office. So determining where that is exactly located is very difficult. It's difficult not having a plan in front of you. It looks as if it's right in line, so this exists, this new sign would be right in line with the stop bar. Is that going to cause any sightline issues for, or the stop bar, I guess, is before a sidewalk by looks of things. So people are going to have to pull through that sidewalk in order to take a left or a right, but it's in line with the stop bar. Are there any sightline issues with that? I can't. Has the engineering staff at all?
Where is the bank sign?
I would say that there could be some sightline issues with that, Matt.
Right.
The stop, it's not even in line with the stop bar, it sticks out beyond the stop bar slightly.
Okay.
And it complies with regulations. The stop bar is essentially where your, you know, the front of the car shouldn't go beyond that. In reality, folks will pull up a little bit, you can see the road itself is another 20 feet or so out from the stop bar. Not saying that, you know, that's appropriate, but that is the case.
I understand.
So the front of the, the front of the sign itself, if I look at the inset, does line up with the stop bar pretty well. So the majority of the sign is behind the stop bar.
Okay. Do you believe, I mean, I know you're not engineering staff, but do you believe that that's going to be an issue with the sightline? Does it need to be moved further back, although it falls in the regulation?
Yeah, it falls within the regulations. I'm going to say that it's not an issue.
Okay.
You know, and I hate to, you know, go anecdotal on you here, but most people will not stop at the stop bar. They'll stop at the sidewalk to make sure they don't hit a pedestrian. They'll inch up a little bit, and then they'll start looking for incoming traffic. By that point, they're far beyond any visual, you know, impact the sign could have on their line of sight.
Got it. Okay, on a different note, on the lights, as Barbara was asking, the underlit sign on the, on the building, in our packet that we received, it showed four individual lights. It looks as if that's been changed. Is that a strip now, or is that? Oh, not, not the, that one, yeah, Mark, the, on the building itself. Are those strips now, or are they still individual wall sconces?
I'm going to let Allison answer that for you, Matt.
Four-foot strips.
Yeah, they're two strips.
Okay. Just making sure, because the packet we received earlier had four lights. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on record that had been changed. Okay.
That has been changed.
Okay. No further questions at this time.
Allison, I have one more question. Do you have to take any of these signs on a state highway to the state highway department?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Only if they're in the state right-of-way.
Anyone else have a question? Commissioners?
No.
Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
This is actually a question for you, Barbara. In the past, haven't we had other signs, like the entrance, exit signs, et cetera, on these approvals, or is this not necessary at this time? I think, like, when Farmington changed over to People's Bank, they had all of the signs on the application. Is that something that we need, or is that not necessary?
That's not what they're asking for.
That's, you're right, though, Matt. If they want additional signage on the property.
Directional.
It does need to comply with regulations, they'll have to show it, and they'll have to bring it into you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, let's take action on this piece of business, Laurento Sign Group. Need a motion, please?
This is Matthew Pogson. I make a motion to accept the sign application as presented with the condition that they come back within a year, and that the lights are dimmable, and that they're meeting our, that they're satisfactory to what we are looking for, and they'll adjust as necessary.
Is there a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Agnes Sidnicki, site plan application for removal and replacement of trees at 250, 254 Main Street in Farmington.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Pogson. I'm going to recuse myself due to the fact that my family owns property adjacent to this.
Okay, thank you. Who's going to?
John Vivert.
John Vivert, are you there? John? Is John Vivert not?
He's not, there he goes.
Hello?
John Vivert?
Yes.
Matt Pogson has recused himself from this presentation, and you would be the person we would like to take part in it as a vote.
Is that fine?
This is Agnes Sidnicki, site plan application for removal and replacement of trees at 248, 250 Main Street in Farmington.
Can I please ask the applicant to raise their hand electronically so that we can unmute them and allow them to talk? I have a couple of Peters here. Can you please raise your hand? Okay. Is, I'm going to talk to Peter M. Peter M, is that?
He's muted.
He's muted, okay. Here. They're both muted. Is the applicant for 250 Main Street available? And if they are, could you please raise your hand? I see two Peters on the attendee list. If you are either one of those Peters, can you please raise your hand? Or any one of those phone numbers that are as yet identified, can you please raise your We can't present your application for you.
Nope.
Madam Chair, would you like to try to come back to this?
Yes, we'll move on to the next piece of business and go back to it should they arise to the occasion. The next piece of business is Frank and Jennifer Alpert. Accept application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 2,400 square feet at 42 Woodruff Road in an R-20 zone, and schedule a public hearing, recommended hearing date of June 8, 2020. They have a motion, please.
Hi, it's Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept the application for Frank and Jennifer Alpert for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 2,400 square feet at 42 Woodruff Road, R-20 zone, and schedule public hearing on June 8, 2020.
This is Marcy Schwartz, I second.
It is a motion with a second. Any conversation? Everyone knows what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearing. Before we do that, let's go back and see if somebody from 248, 250 Main Street has arrived.
I see no hands.
Okay, we can't, we can't present it for them, so. We're going to move on to the public hearing.
Madam Chair, Mike Boulis.
Yes.
I will be recusing myself from this application.
Scott was sitting for him.
That's fine. Keith Vivert, are you there?
I thought Scott was sitting for him.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, okay.
Keith, you will be sitting on this.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mike. It is Brett and Lindsay DePolonio. Application for special permit to construct a house in excess of 3,200 square feet at 16 Whispering Rod Road in Unionville and in R-30 zone.
She has her hands raised.
Thank you. If I can get there. Oops. Lindsay, how are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. So thank you for letting us present.
Please introduce, please introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
So it's Lindsay, and Brett DePolonio is also here tonight. And we are at 16 Whispering Rod Road in Unionville.
Thank you. You may go forward.
Okay. So thank you so much for your time tonight. As many of you know, we lost our home on January 2nd to a fire. So the house, the house was knocked down to the foundation due to the damages. In the past, we had always talked about potentially adding on to our home, but there was never a good time. So we do have a lot of family who live out of town and across the country, so we would love an extra bedroom for them to stay when they come to visit. And also Brett does work from home, so an office for him would also be important to us. And having a raised ranch, we also don't have a basement, so part of our old garage will be used as storage in the plan that we are presenting here tonight. So this house is the house that Brett grew up in, and we hope to make this our forever home with our kids. And we absolutely love our neighborhood, and would hope to rebuild our home to suit our family. Several other homes on our street and around the neighborhood also have garage additions, and we feel that the design that we are presenting will fall right in line with the neighborhood. And we just thank you for your time and appreciate the consideration. That's it.
Okay. Commissioners, you have questions?
This is Inez St. James. That's awesome. Thank you so much for coming in front of us, and I'm glad your family's safe, and it's so cool that you're going to stay in town.
Thank you.
Yeah, now that, I think it's cool. And hopefully your kids will come back to Unionville and live happily, happily ever after, too. The plan looks fine to me. Mark, does it, as far as sight? Oh my gosh, I'm a little backwards today. Sightlines, rear front, everything is good from the town perspective?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to ask. And it, it looks lovely. It doesn't seem like it's going to be ginormous compared to your neighbors, and I am familiar of the neighborhood, and I agree, there are homes that have the garage added on, and I'll do best to you. I have no problem with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Matthew Pogson. My only question is, have you reached out to the neighbors? Obviously had to to some degree, but have you had any feedback from any of your neighbors on this?
All of our neighbors are in support of everything, and they're just excited to see everything start moving forward.
That was it, thank you.
Thanks.
Hearing none. I would say, Lindsay, is there anything else you'd like to say before I close this public hearing?
Not at this time, we just appreciate your consideration.
Okay, I will close this public hearing.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
What?
Maybe.
Just Lindsay's hand is raised.
Okay, so no additional hands being raised.
Oh, I didn't call for hands raised.
Yeah, I can read my hands if they need one.
My apologies, Linda, I was supposed to allow the public to comment if there was some. We don't have any, but I want you to know that that was a failure on my part, and I apologize.
No worries.
I see no hands.
No hands raised to take part. So with that, I now will close this public hearing. Now, as we decided, we would vote on each application as we went. So we could vote on the Brett and Lindsay DePolonio application. Need a motion?
Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve Brett and Lindsay DePolonio as presented, the application as presented.
I need a second, please.
Second, Keith Vivert.
All right, are there any conversation about this? Do we know what we're going to be voting on?
Yes. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion's carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's go back one more time under new business to Agnes Sidnicki to see if anyone has arrived.
I think she's raising her hand up.
Okay, is that there?
S-I-E-N. Yeah. I'm just starting to remember.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. I do apologize, we've been here since 7:00, and we're having a bunch of busy assistants, so we sincerely apologize about that. Yes, good afternoon, committee members. I'm Peter Powell, Treasurer and Secretary of Farmington Village Association, located at 250 to 254 Main Street in Farmington. I'm representing Agnes Shilinski of PCS Properties CT, the association president, Thomas Krajewski and Agatha Traguniewski of 244 LLC. Thomas is the association vice president, and Christios Sterdiotis, the association vice president. All who are members and stakeholders of Farmington Village Association. We're here to propose for an affirmative vote for the removal and replacement of trees considered a risk throughout and adjacent its property. With the overhanging trees that we currently have on property... With the overhanging trees that we currently have on property, the result can be loss of life to fallen branches or trees, severe injuries to fallen branches, damage to vehicles from falling branches, damage to building from falling branches. There are various news reports on people who have been injured or have died due to falling branches. In May 2019, a large branch fell in the roadway, luckily no one was in its path. Part of Farmington Village Association area renovations will include will include removing of dangerous trees on 250 to 254 Main Street, Farmington in Connecticut. Remove border trees per property owner of 248 Main Street in Farmington. Propose to plant 30 trees for area aesthetics, but safe to property visitors and customers. Association members have expressed concern about the dangers that the current trees poses and voted on the matter 3 to 0 in favor of tree removal and planting of trees that is safer to the public. The association has, association has contracted with Seaplace Improvement Excavation for Tree Removal. The association will purchase 30 trees from locals in an effort to support local farms and local jobs. Trees, five, and this is based on the recommendation from the town staff member. Trees 5 to 6 feet will be planted and approximately 8 feet from, of each other, with the exception of one at 12 feet apart and the other 5 to 6 feet apart. As I mentioned, we considered this seriously, and you know, we, based on the feedback that we got, we decided to update based on the feedback. Trees identified, the tree by Christios Sterdiotis building. If you can probably change the slide, please. Also, another tree, trees that we identified is the ones that shows at the back fence of the Poxon's property. Other trees identified is streets by 250 to 254 Main Street and 248 Main Street property line. Written request was received from property owner to remove trees. Survey states marks the property line. Additional trees identified is tree on 248 Main Street and hang over the road of 250 to 240, 250 to 254 Main Street. Written requests received from property owner to remove trees. Survey states mark the property line. Additional trees, there's tree on 248 Main Street and hang over the property of 250 to 254 Main Street. Written requests received from property owner to remove trees. Survey states mark the property line. We have submitted an updated plan that, based on mark communication and based on the staff member communication, we added, as I mentioned before, 10 to make it the 30 additional arborvitae. And also, there was a request to label at the size of the trees, and we, based on the staff comments, we have it at 5 to 6 tall. That's included in the legend or key. Also, if you look, there are some examples of arborvitae that we could probably use. Can you go to the other side, slide, please, Mark, or? Okay, and that's fine. So, our conclusion is, you know, the Farmington Village Association that oversees 250 to 254 Main Street in Farmington, with its members 3 to 0 affirmative vote, is seeking approval to remove existing trees that poses a risk to life on property on its premises. The risk is primarily through falling branches or falling trees on its premises. A recent occurrence was in May of 2019. Per request and authorization of property owner, Thomas Kraszewski of 248 Main Street, Farmington, its area adjacent to 250 to 254 Main Street will also be addressed. The contractor that will use will be Charts Bliss of Seaplace Improvement Excavation. And to, we did, as I mentioned before, we listened keenly and followed each concern. We addressed each concern, and so they associate that to address the TPZ staff valid concern noted. The association updated the plan and will plant 30 trees, 5 to 6 feet in height, to compensate for any difference in previous proposed linear footage. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have questions on this?
This is Inez St. James. All right. There's, this was good. Thank you for the presentation. We have gotten a lot of communication from the town. I'm trying to wrap my head around it. So, the pictures that were shown of the actual property, it looks like we were dealing with overgrown trees.
Yes.
But not many. It looks kind of sparse to me. I guess the question is probably more for you, Mark, since I can't really understand some of the plans. What is being presented? Is it less than what's existing?
It's more than.
Depends on how you look at it, Inez. If you look at the site plan and follow my cursor, the 20, let me just enlarge this a little bit. This is a 24-inch spruce which is to be removed and replaced with an NSD, which is a Norwegian spruce dwarf at 5 feet tall. My, my research shows that they, they don't, don't get much taller than 5 feet. We have a, another tree here, a 21-inch spruce, another 21-inch spruce to be removed. And it appears to be replaced with a spruce, a dwarf spruce, Norway dwarf spruce. These are not on the applicant's property. This is an adjacent property.
Okay.
On this adjacent property, which is part of the application, I can, I can only assume. The, I don't know who's taking responsibility for planting these. It's unclear. I would think that the commission would want this bonded. But there appears to be a couple of trees remaining out in front. These are the red maples. There appears to be another tree here that's not labeled that's remaining. We have a couple of royal magnolias, which can get to be about 12 feet in height. And then a, an RR, which is a, excuse me. An RR, which is a red rocket crepe myrtle, again, a smaller shrub-like tree, or bush, I should say. This is the, the person who's presenting owns 250 or a portion of it. They're proposing to remove a large stand of old, I believe, white pine in this area, or cedar, excuse me. There's a mix of, a couple of different types of trees in here, and replace them with arborvitae, starting about this point on the property line, running all the way down the property line, and then coming back to a point right about here. He's, he's listed them as 8 feet on center, and I know that the applicant has characterized several times that he's vetted this all with staff and that staff is in full compliance with. It, it has been a long process, and it's been difficult for us to convey to the applicant that there's a lot of landscaping being removed from the site, and we definitely appreciate the buffer that he's installing. 8 feet does not seem sufficient to me. Even if they go in at 5 and 6, which is something the commission generally accepts. You look at the hedge rows that the applicant presented themselves, those are more like 4 to 6 feet in terms of spacing. But when I, I planted arborvitae myself in the past, and they've been planted much closer than that together. There's no plantings proposed for the front of 250 Main Street. There was a white birch. It was taken down within the last year. We're not exactly sure when, but it was taken down. So, there's no plantings proposed for the front of this, of this property itself. So, that's, and the ones over here, I mean, again, I don't know who's gonna take responsibility for these. Maybe the commission wants to ask the applicant that question. I just asked the applicant to take a drive up and down Main Street and see what was represented in terms of plantings, you know, for some of the nicer properties that we have on Main Street. So, I, I was hoping that they would come back with something that would show a little more continuity in terms of planting across the facade here. You'll also notice that I did not hold the applicant to the commission's landscaping standards. I thought that doing so would be somewhat onerous because of the existing nature of the, of the site. It's largely paved in the back. However, it, it, I did spec, I did specifically ask the owner to, or the applicant to, you know, consider some nice front yard specimen plantings. So, we got some in some of the properties that, I don't know who's gonna plant these, but we didn't get any on the property that I believe the owner is representing. That's my understanding of the, of the application as I view it.
Can I interject just a little bit here? So, Thomas Kraszewski and Agatha Chuganowski, she, they are working with Mark at this time. They have submitted not, and they have submitted their thoughts at this, an informal plan at this time. They approve just for us to remove the trees that over, the trees that are close to the property that can fall at any time. They are working with Mark to present their plan for their property. They presented a letter. Mark, can you show that letter, please?
I don't believe I put it up, but I can attest to the fact that we've received a letter from the adjacent property owner indicating that it's acceptable to remove trees that are on his property. And they specify some. I, I don't have a problem with that. What I have an issue with is that all I've seen are architecturals. I haven't seen any site plans. And I'm wondering why these are even being shown if there's no intent on anybody's part here this evening to, to plant them. And I think that needs to be clarified to the commission before they can act on this plan.
Right. They did claim that they will be planting and they'll be working on their own plan to plant their trees.
So, then, in my, in my opinion, these should be discounted entirely because it's not a part of this application. You're not guaranteeing that these trees will go in. Is that correct, Peter?
They are guaranteeing that the trees is going in.
Okay, there was, there was no information, there was no information received to that extent. Their name is not on the application. They did consent to remove trees on their property. They didn't sign the application indicating that they would be planting the trees as shown on this application.
So, I go, I go apologize, but I thought there was a letter that was presented, and they did identify what they would do with the trees, what they, their intention was for planting. If you could probably present.
The only letter we, the only letter we received was the one that they agreed to the removal of trees on their property.
Can you bear me a second? So, these, I'm sorry, the red robin beardman. Yes, if you could probably pull that letter up, that would probably help us a great deal.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I've got it, but we'll take a look. Hang on. I'll look in the folder. The most recent letter received yesterday talks about the emerald green arborvitae only.
Right, but the letter before that, Mark, because that's something that you requested of us specifically to present.
The letter dated May 21st, again, talks just about the emerald green arborvitae. Hang on.
244 LLC.
Received a lot of communication. Okay. What you stated to me was that per the site, okay. Per the site plan provided to TPZ, the association is only removing four large dangerous tree that overhangs its property by 250 to 244 Main Street border per property owner's request. Trees removed will be replaced with additional trees by the property owners as listed on the site plan provided. Those, those property owners didn't sign the site plan application, and I honestly don't see a letter from them specifically guaranteeing that they will plant the trees as shown on the site plan.
Mark, is it possible for me to share my screen? Probably I can try to pull that letter up or in that link that I gave.
It's not.
The date of the letter.
What's the date of the letter?
Bear in mind, let me pull it up.
Unfortunately, we cannot see your screen.
It says 244 to 248 tree removal. Bear in mind, second, let me open the letter up.
What's it dated?
Yes, bear in mind, second. It was dated May 13th.
May 13th?
Yes.
Farmington, okay, I've got an April 13th.
From 244 LLC.
Yeah, no, this is Farmington Village Association. Let me look a little further. All right, I think I found it.
Is it possible to display that, please?
No, it's not. I don't have it on. Yeah, no, it's not. I apologize. There's, there was way too much information, Peter, for us to scan in and, and display. I think you can.
How large?
It says we have reviewed. Okay, if, just bear with me a minute.
Sure.
So, I did find a letter dated May 13th, 2020. I, Thomas and Agatha, owner's property at 248 Main Street in Farmington. You didn't mention, okay, 248 is what counts. 244 already has the, the, that's not proposed. I believe those are exist, existing at 244. The existing building 248. We've reviewed and have accepted Farmington Village, Village Association tree removal and replacement plan as of May 12th. Quantity, one spruce. These are trees coming down. To be replaced with, okay. One Norway spruce.
Two, two, two.
One royal magnolia, one red rocket, one royal, okay, so you're, yeah, okay. So, I guess the commission can accept this, and my apologies, as evidence that the adjacent property owner
Has agreed.
has agreed to this site plan. I'm gonna ask that the commission, ask the engineering department to appropriately bond for the replacement cost of these trees before they set, set, set to removing any vegetation. So, that's, I guess that's fine. So that's, I guess that's fine. Uh, but the, the, you know, as we typically do, um, a bond for these improvements, I think it would be wise for the commission to, um, have the, um, development specialist, uh, appropriate a bond amount. Should they decide to approve the application.
We would be setting the pot?
No.
Oh, no.
Development specialist. And again, I, I would just point to the fact that I, I'm sure I did discuss Arbiviti with the, um, uh, with the owner or the representative. Um, we typically have a go-to planting of Norway spruce. And I understand that those will probably get too large for what he wants to do. Um, I'm not in agreement that the Arbiviti at five and six feet at eight feet on center are, are really sufficient to provide a buffer, um, an immediate buffer to the adjacent property.
Yeah. Michael Bolus, that's, that would be my question. We're, we're removing a lot of-
Who's speaking, please?
-tree along the letter. Um, Michael Bolus.
Who?
Oh, Mike, thank you.
You're removing a lot of trees along the western prop-
I do apologize. You're fading.
We lost Mike, I think.
All right. Can I step in? Patrick Carrier? Um, yeah. So along, along the Loretta C. Poxon, I, I did take a ride through there today. Um, those, those pine trees, first of all, there's a lot going on here. The, those pine trees, what are they on center at this point? Um, were those, I'm assuming those were originally planted to create an immediate buffer? I guess that's it.
I believe so. Um, we can take a look at the photo and, uh, extrapolate from that. Right about there. So we have several that are very close here. These appear to be white pine, do they not?
They do. I believe some kind of pine. When I drove through there, definitely some kind of pine. I don't know exactly.
There's, there's some spaces in there, but there are some here that are closer to four and five feet, um, on center based on the width of these cars and the distance between the trunks that I'm viewing here.
Okay. And I, I, I have to say the, as far as the Arbivites go, the, um, I, I planted my own buffer with Arbivites. And yeah, they definitely eight feet. It's going to take a while. I feel like if you're going to go with that size, it's got to be closer. And I do, I do feel like, you know, if you're going to take that down, which those obviously were just left to grow, you know, kind of at will and out of control, um, and now taking them down is the best thing. Um, but yeah, I would say the spacing should be closer together because, you know, the neighbor, I think, you know, would appreciate to have that buffer. I mean, he doesn't have it now, but that's what it was intended for.
And this is Ines St. James. I, I also want to, um, kind of reference the letter we received before this meeting, uh, from the Poxons. And, um, I think what, um, is mentioned in the letter is, uh, you know, they're fine with the proposal, but they are, um, asking for replacement to be like for like, which I don't think is unreasonable. Um, and I agree with you, Patrick. I, I did the same thing. I pulled in today to look at this. And there was a lot going on in the back, but, um, those Emerald Greens or whatever you're going with, they have to be closer.
Understand, everybody, this is not a public hearing. This is just an application. Um, so it's not like we can't discuss how we feel about it. Um, it's just an application. I'd like to go back to Patrick for a minute. You, you were down there today or recently. What, I mean, you said you created your own, um, barrier with Arbiviti. How far apart did you plant them?
I believe actually when I did it, it would, they were, they were big. I wanted it like an immediate buffer. So I went six to eight. And I believe I was like six feet. So maybe that's, you know, quicker than, than is needed. But I mean, that's definitely a big difference. So yeah, I, they were probably about, I would think from my own knowledge that six feet at the minimum, you know, uh, when you're going to plant five to six. I mean, those are, those are pretty, those are not that big a trees. Um, it would take a while, I think. So probably about six feet, if I remember, but they were six to eight footers though.
Okay.
But is it possible for us to have that eight feet and then probably have something else? We, we were just trying for aesthetics and, um, basically not to have those huge overgrown trees, um, that can fall and injure someone on the property. So our goal was trying to just mitigate a risk. Um, and that's our overall intention. Um, so we decided to have that eight feet apart. Um, eventually we can do other things. Um, it still will look good. Uh, it still can be a part of a shade. Uh, if you look at the fence, how the, the fence is at this time, you know, um, you know, we'd appreciate some consideration of our ultimate goal is to try to mitigate risk on a, on a property. That's the ultimate goal. And, you know, we can do so much with this, you know, uh, we use Arbiviti because of the height. We don't want something to be overgrown and then we still come back to the same problem. So we're trying to think long-term also and, um, also to prevent risk on the property. So that's a primary reason. Um, you know, and as, um, Mark had mentioned, um, um, you know, the opinion, um, request is less than what the regulations were required. So, um, you know, each things, the, everything that Mark staff presented, what Mark presented to us, we took it seriously. And so because we wanted to address the ultimate thing of, um, basically eliminating a risk on the property. Um, you know, so we'll, we'll ask, we'll really appreciate that to be taken into consideration. Because that is the ultimate goal.
So this, this, this plan was not my recommendation. Uh, this plan was one that I reviewed and, and somewhat reluctantly conceded to. And I understand the applicant's desires to rid themselves of potential, um, uh, you know, danger of the overhanging trees. But that really has nothing to do with this buffer that they're proposing on the side. I was going to suggest a maximum distance of, uh, four to five feet for the Arbiviti, given the height that they're being planted at, uh, which was proposed at five to six for the length that he's, uh, requested. I was always also going to ask the commission whether or not they'd want to consider requiring some form of front yard landscaping. I think this is what I've been saying all along. The applicant has indicated that they're listening to me, but I've heard, uh, nothing, nor have I seen anything in terms of an offering to do any planting in the front yard either. Um, again, so we're, we're, uh, the characterization that the applicant's giving you that, that, that I'm fine with what he's got here is not correct. I understand that, uh, it, it is onerous for us to require him to comply with our regulations in totality. Um, but we're looking for an improvement and an aesthetic that we, we want to bring to this area. Um, and landscaping has a lot to do with that.
Well, we did plant, as we mentioned, um, two Crimson Queen. And, um, you know, so we, we already, we already planted trees, um, at this time and we can do more. But the thing is that, um, we're in the process of doing paving, um, and other works on the property, um, you know, and we want to, um, rid ourselves of risk to the property, you know. Um, we would not want someone to come to the property and have a tree branch fall on someone, you know. If you can just bear that in mind, you know, we're doing our best here to resolve, um, to, um, you know, get rid of a problem on the property. Um, we can go through all of this and then something happens that's, oh my God, if I only knew my condolences. And we're trying to prevent that from happening because we're trying to look at the long-term to mitigate all these risks, you know, and address these immediate problems at this time, you know. Um, and we can take care and we can do other things. We have always had a great relationship with, uh, many people from the town, you know, and we want to maintain that, you know. But we have, we see a risk on the property that we're trying to address.
Well, we do understand that. I mean, you've made that very clear. Um, you mentioned a fence. How tall is the fence?
It'd be six foot stack.
Probably about, uh, five to six feet.
Okay.
All right. So Patrick Carrier, so that buffer again. So I understand the risk part, right? So take, we would take those trees down. But to mitigate risk going forward and to create somewhat of an instant buffer, um, you would plant them closer at that size and then you maintain the trees. Are you opposed to that as far as trimming the trees every year? I think that's how trees, you, buffers are usually trimmed and maintained. Are you opposed to that?
No, we're not opposed to anything. Um, our, our goal is to work with the town, but we have this risk of these trees, um, at the time that can cause harm on the property. And then-
No, we do, we do understand that. But we need to be, you need to be specific as to what you're going to do so that the commissioners can understand what to expect and what to vote on.
And, and I think this is Ines St. James. The piece I'm struggling with is we have buffer regulations and what is here is not meeting those already.
Um, and can you quote the regulations, please, Ines? Um, I do apologize. I'm not sure of that.
No, we're not, we're not getting into that right now.
This is, yeah.
Uh, we can't get into that right now. Um, because this is an existing site. There's some grandfathered paving. There's, there's other things there that probably would not meet today's standards. But because it's existing, we try to cooperate with the property owners. But what we're looking for tonight is specific as to what you are willing to plant. And I think we hear that if you're going to go with a six-foot, a, a six-foot Arbiviti-
Yes.
That they should be closer to four feet apart instead of eight feet apart. Because then you will create the scenic buffer that we are looking for as a town for that property. We are not asking you to take pavement out or, or anything else. We're just asking you to replace trees with something that will create a long-lasting buffer. So are you willing to do something like that? You need to tell the commissioners what you are-
Yes, they are.
Actually going to do.
Yes, we are.
What is, what is it that you are actually going to do?
We will, uh, plant them, uh, four feet, um, apart then. If, if that is-
Five to six, four feet on center.
A five to six foot Arbiviti, four feet apart.
Okay. We will do that.
Now, the commissioners have all heard that and it's on record. So, um, is there anything else you would like to present to us this evening?
Uh, no, that's it. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now Barbara, Patrick Carrier, what about the, the front section? So we, we kind of hammered that part out.
It was not in the application. It was a, it's not what he made as an application to include the front. Um, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that. You can make suggestions if you think that in, in your judgment as commissioners, that you should consider Mark's feelings about the, and presenting to this applicant, the idea of improving the streetscape from Main Street. You can include that in any motion that you make.
I think it's a little difficult and I appreciate that, Madam Chairman. Um, I think it's a little difficult to force a specific species or, um, type or size onto an applicant. Um, I did my best to guide the applicant to look at front yard landscaping. Again, asking him to drive up and down Main Street. Uh, his answer was to propose nothing. So I think that's what you've got. Yeah.
And I do apologize about that. Um, there needs to be-
No, we don't, we're not going to hear any more from you now. We've heard enough from you. We need to hear from the commissioners. They're going to be considering voting now.
So is it approp-, this is Ines St. James. Is it appropriate to ask that a bond be issued?
Yes.
Okay. Right. I, I'm ready to make the motion, but I, I'm sure other commissioners may have comments.
Well, you can make a motion and get a second and then have discussion.
Sounds good. Okay. This is Ines St. James. Um, I move to approve the application for, from Agnes Senicki, site plan application for removal and replacement of trees at two fifty dash two fifty-four Main Street in Farmington.
I think it says two forty-eight to two fifty, doesn't it?
The application-
Oh, okay.
Two, it says two forty, excuse me. Should I read it all over again or it's okay?
No, two fifty to two fifty-four. That's your correct. I'm sorry.
And including, and including, and including two forty-eight, uh, because the, the applicant now includes two forty-eight as the representative, um, pointed out that the trees in front of where it says NF two forty-four LLC, that's actually two forty-eight Main Street.
Those two trees are going to be replaced by the-
Well, there's one, two, three-
Small spruce, right?
Yeah. No, there's, there's a whole bunch in the front yard that the applicant has, um, indicated the owner has agreed as a part of this site plan application to attend to.
Okay.
Should I just start from beginning?
No, I, I-
You're fine. So we, we move to approve. Okay. And, um, so it's two forty-eight, two fifty, now, dash two fifty-four, Main Street Farmington with the condition that the trees are Arbiviti, five to six feet tall between, well, at, at about four feet on center and that a bond be issued and received by the planning department before any trees are removed.
Thank you.
And I need a second, please.
This is Marcy Schwartz. I second.
Discussion?
Uh, this is John. Uh, just for clarification, on the screen that we're looking at, which has the, uh, display of the property, uh, that the house where the, where the building where the trees are being removed, that's not part of the applicant's pro-, property, is that two forty-eight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Even though it says two forty-four.
I'm sorry, John. It's owned by two forty-four LLC, but it is actually two forty-eight Main Street.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from commissioners or comments? Hearing none. There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's move on to old business. Michael Quas, application for special permit for amateur, amateur radio tower in excess of forty-five feet and less than sixty-five feet and an application for residential helipad at one twenty-four Mountain Road in an R eighty zone. This was a public hearing that was closed on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, and we chose to postpone voting until tonight. So we need a motion and a second to start conversation, please.
Would you, uh, Madam Chair, this is Matt Pogson. Would you like a motion of, say, the affirmative to accept the-
A motion must be an affirmative.
Okay. So, um-
Then you vote the way you desire.
Okay. The discussion that we had last time, um, brought up a few conditions that were, um, things about-
There's no motion in, on the table yet.
No, I'm, oh, sorry.
We can't have a discussion without a motion and a second.
I, I understand, Madam Chair. I was just refreshing what we had spoken about. But I will move to approve, uh, the Michael Quas application for special permit for amateur radio tower in excess of forty-five and less than sixty-five feet and an application of residential helipad at one twenty-four Mountain Road with the following conditions. Um, an official survey must be submitted to the town planning department and must be, uh, must confirm the lot size and landing zone setbacks. The landing zone setbacks may not fall in the ridgeline protection zone. Hours of operation of the helipad must be between nine AM and five PM on weekdays and ten AM and two PM on weekends. The helipad will only be used for takeoff and landing of small two-seater, uh, light series helicopters. The appli- two-seater light series helicopters. The applicant will keep a log of the flight plans, dates and times of landings and departures, which will be presented in one year. And I literally just lost what I was reading. And I believe that the last thing was that the applicant would come back within one year to present the application, to re-present the application for reapproval, as we do with other applicants. Sorry, I had something I had right in front of me. So that was it, I believe.
Patrick Carrier, a second.
I, I don't think you can say it's a one-year approval. I think it's an approval that can be reviewed at one year.
Right. So if I can just throw some light on that, the town of Farmington does have in their regulations several instances where special permit approvals are good for so long and require that a foundation or whatever be in the ground within a one year or two years. That sort of goes against what, what, what legal setting precedent would dictate. Special permits like a variance run with the land forever. So the only exception the courts have made to that have been excavation activities. By their very nature, they are not permanent. So I would say that one condition probably would be modified, Matt, if you, if you would, to require a, a one-year review as to, as opposed to a one-year approval. Once you approve it, it's approved.
That was, that was part of what I wanted to discuss, but that's fine. I can remove that and make it a...
Now we can discuss.
Okay. So now that, that discussion has come about, other than that issue of removing that from my motion, is there anything else, I suppose, that need to, needs to be discussed?
Well, this is Barbara and I have a question for Mark. Can you designate, you said that a special permit runs with the land. Can you designate that to the current owner?
No.
No, see, we can't even control. I was hoping you could say...
It runs with the land, just like a variance, so...
Okay, as long as everybody understands that. And that, that goes to say, the, the presentation said there was no pad being installed. He was going to take off and land on grass. Is that correct? And so the, the idea of must be constructed within a year doesn't apply because there's no construction for the pad.
And it's not one of those specific items within your regulations.
Right.
So this would be, this would be a, you know, essentially a forever approval. The conditions, as was, was just noted, will also run with the land.
Okay.
So this is...
Other commissioners, come on, let's talk about it.
This is Matt Pogson again. I just want to clarify that the applicant, then, the last portion of what I said then, which I was able to bring back up here, that one year reapproval, even though we've done that on other things, in this case totally is not something that is even really able to be done. So the applicant, the law, even reviewing any of that doesn't matter after a year, correct? Mark?
Correct, yeah. Again, the only time the courts really permit it is for earth excavation activities. You know, for, I must be bored, but I have read case law on this and, you know, have schooled myself pretty well. So the information I've given you, I'll stand on as being correct.
Thank you.
Comments from other commissioners?
Barbara, this is John.
Yes, John.
Could you refresh my memory? Am I the voting alternate on this?
Who's voting on this one? No.
Scott.
Scott, I am.
Scott is voting on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Scott Hall. So I want to ask a clarifying question of Mark related to the special permit. That gives us more leeway, right, Mark, to, to vote in either direction, you know, in terms of whether it's the right fit for the neighborhood and those kinds of considerations?
Yeah, I, um, yes, Scott, you, you have to pick your, you have to pick your regulations carefully. So special permit is anything allowed within a set of regulations by special permit, and it can specify what zones they're allowed in, it can specify what the uses are. When you look at the criteria for reviewing a special permit, it's in addition and above what you would normally do for a site plan. In the case of a site plan, which is a straight administrative approval, you look to see that it complies with the regulations. If it does, I mean, an attorney will tell you, if it does, you have to approve it. And I typically would advise you the same. With a special permit or exception, there's, they're synonymous, but you look to the, the guidance within your regulations under Article 4, Section 12. I think I have it in your, in your agenda review where owing to the specific nature of, you know, citing of any special permit use, you have within your rights to review that use specifically for where it's being proposed. And it goes to precedent setting. And as I talked about that at the last meeting, I don't want to bring up anything new. So it goes to precedent setting and special permits do not set precedents. If you approve one next door, it doesn't set a precedent for approving the one that happens to be next door to it. If you deny one next door, it doesn't set the precedent for denying one that happens to be next door to that one. So in, in reviewing your Article 4, Section 12 criteria, it lists what you should be considering. You know, the character of the neighborhood, you know, the use and enjoyment of, of the property. And, and that's for everyone within the effective distance that they, that could be impacted by the application. So short answer is you can look at that criteria and use that criteria to make your decision. And, and using that criteria against the backdrop of all of the testimony that you've already received, you, you can, you can add that as additional discretion.
Thank you, Mark. I guess, yeah, thank you. That was, that was thorough for sure. I, I guess what I've been thinking about since we, we had the last discussion about this is, is all the concerns in the neighborhood and whether having a helipad there is really conducive and fits with being in a residential area like that. I, the more I thought about it, the more I just didn't see it. But that's my, my opinion at this point.
Other commissioners?
This is in S. James and sort of in line with what Scott just said, in my opinion, the risk to the neighborhood and the public is too great to grant this special permit.
Well, we need to... Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, so Patrick Carrier, I mean, I drove through there today. I, you know, I wish, I wish that the special permit could, you know, end with the selling of the home, you know, because Mr. Quas is obviously completely, you know, he's, he's got a resume that's unbelievable. As far as, as it being conducive, I mean, the safety portion of it, I, I just don't really see that being a huge issue. I know that, you know, just the thought of a helicopter, that's scary, right? But for me, for whatever reason, I don't think the safety is an issue. And if, if it was, you know, I don't even think, you know, Mr. Quas would be wanting the helipad there. He came up with a clear, a pretty clear flight path, which is not flying over any houses. So, you know, that part I'm not concerned about. Again, safety. As far as noise, even the noise portion, I heard a lot of people, you know, a lot of the people were worried about the noise. And Mr. Chase brought up a good point. The, you know, you know, a leaf blower that, that you start at 7:00 AM on a Saturday, which follows town ordinance, is probably way more obnoxious and probably used more often. So I, I don't see an issue, to be honest with it. I do wish, again, that it ended with the sale of the home because I kind of put a lot of weight into Mr. Quas's resume. But with that said, I, I am not opposed to this.
Any other comments before we vote or questions before we vote?
This is Matthew Pogson, and I just wanted to weigh in on it a little bit. I feel as if it is a little off for the character of the area. We do not have other helipads in the area. It's not something that is common to this town at all. Besides that, I did ask during the last meeting for clarification about safety practices and in the case of an emergency landing on takeoff or landing, what sort of radius that might be. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a very clear answer on that. Maybe that's because there isn't a clear answer on that, other than that Mr. Quas himself said that he would do his best and that it is common practice to do your best to avoid populated areas, which is some, you know, reprieve from that. But it's not really the, it's not really satisfactory to my concerns about safety. So I'm not necessarily leaning towards this being a situation that I think I'm in favor of. That's all I have to say.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and with a second. I'm going to call a vote and I'm going to ask you to vote by roll call so we'll know which way everybody voted because we may, well, unless it's as unanimous, let's see what happens. There is a motion and a second on the Michael Quas application for special permanent, permit at 124 Mountain Road. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was in favor. I, I, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I am in favor. Patrick Carrier is in favor.
Okay. Let's go down and do a roll call vote so we, we have it on record. Matt?
I am not in favor of the application.
Mike? Oh, Mike is not voting. Who am I missing then? Okay, Scott?
Not in favor.
Mark? Marcy, I'm sorry. I see M.A.R.C. Marcy? She's not there.
Marcy, are you there?
I'm sorry. I was muted for a second. The house phone was ringing. I am not in favor. I apologize. I'm, no.
Aynes?
Opposed.
Who am I missing?
Patrick.
Patrick already said he's for it.
I am for it.
Barbara.
And I am for it. So it is one, two, three, four no's, two, is that right? There should be seven.
Six, yeah. Mike is out, Scott is in.
Okay. Motion fails. All right, planners report?
All right. I have a couple of things for you and I'll, I'll, I'll appreciate your patience. The first thing I'd like to discuss with you is 449 Cook Street, back on 3/26/2020, after an email exchange with the commissioner, commission, we were permitted to grant administrative approval to the owner of 449 Cook Street to extend his open carports on either side of the structure. Since then, he reports that he's run amok of some ever store seizes along the backside of the property and along this area here as well. He doesn't have enough room to continue down this way. He needs to get in here. So he would like to propose an alternate, and that would be this structure here. I did send you an email with regards to this item.
Did you?
Essentially, what it gets down to is the owner asking if the administrative approval could be extended to a different location on the site. The building would essentially be the same, open air storage like mezzanine for his manufacturing processes. We've been there working with the owner on, actually Shannon and Bruce have been there, I can't take credit for that, working with the owner to improve the drainage on the site. And in doing so, he started asking questions about these improvements. And so it led to the initial approval. Now we're talking about whether or not they'd be willing to permit staff to offer an administrative approval for a similar structure on the other side of the property. One, one notable thing, this particular action would require that he get a survey so that we can confirm the setbacks from the side yard. It wasn't so much an issue on the other side because there was no structures close proximity to this, to the property line where he wants to locate. The property setbacks are 50 feet, one of 20. So we would need a survey to guarantee that that is probably in this case, going to have to be 30 or more. That's it in a nutshell.
Mark, this is Marcy. It just looks like a different, you know, where he was proposing it, there's just a bunch of trees. On the other side, there are trees and it looks like somebody's property that has something in it, although it does all look industrial.
It is.
Yeah.
Buffering, buffering could be a reasonable consideration. I believe there's a fence that separates the two properties, but there are no vegetated buffers. It is an, it is a C1 zone backing up to a C1 zone. So they both are highly commercial in nature. The structure is about 17 feet tall.
So I'm, the other neighbor has been notified and, you know, there's been no...
No, we would, we would, we would make sure that that would be done as part of the process.
Okay.
You know, again, if it were a site plan application, Marcy, it would not require notification other than being on an agenda, which that property owner would probably not pick up, you know, unless they were judicious, judiciously surfing our website to read the agendas that come forward. So, but, but as part of this process, we would require that he present a letter from the adjacent property owner indicating that it's okay. And if it's not, then he has the option to come back before you. At that point, you know, the property owner would be put on notice.
All right. As long as he's been being notified, it sounds good. Great, thanks.
Mark, Mike, can you hear me?
Hey, Mike.
Hopefully my internet works now. Just a question. Reading that email quickly, was the size of this?
It is bigger, Mike. It went from 2,400 square feet. Let me see, 24, I, I, do I have the email? I believe it went from 2,400 square feet to 4,000 even. So it is bigger. Let me just look quick.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. So I believe it went from 2,400 square feet to 4,000. 20, 24, 40, 26, 40, 40, 12, 6, 12, 16. 2,400 square feet to 4,000 square feet.
Okay. That doesn't...
So it is a little bigger.
Okay. It doesn't require anything additional on us because it's a little bit bigger size?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's a big ask. But we were asked to bring it to you, so that's what I'm doing. Now, he has been cooperative in terms of working through his stormwater management issues with us, and he's been spending some dollars fixing and repairing that. It's bigger than what was required or requested in the first place. It's going to require that he go out and get a survey anyway. It, it's really a commission call. He's asked for administrative approval. We're bringing it to you. Believe me, Mike, I have, and to the commission in, in general, I have no qualms either way. It's, it's your pleasure.
This is Matt Pogson speaking, and I personally would like to see a site plan, and I'd like to see this on paper. I mean, I know we can't look at paper right now, but I'd like to see this a little bit more formally laid out than what we're being presented with, especially if they're asking to increase it by, I don't know, what would that was like 30% or something like that. So I don't know. It seems, it seems to be a little excessive. I prefer to have a little more information, and I'd like this to be a little bit more formal than what's being presented right now personally. formal than what's being presented right now personally.
Okay. I think maybe you want a consensus at any rate?
Well, it's not something we're going to vote on anyway.
Right.
So it's just, you're going to go back and tell them that they're not getting administrative approval.
Okay.
Because the commission wants everything more formalized.
On to the next. Thank you, Matt. And I don't disagree. I received an email, I discussed briefly with Marissa Pratt today, owner of the Goddard School at 6 Bridgewater. She followed up with an email. The new, boy, I didn't look at it here, the reduced group size and health enhancement procedures for childcare programs, it's an executive order, is going to reduce the amount of children per classroom to the point where they've already taken a hit, they're trying to start back up. She found, she's currently at 6 Bridgewater, she found property at 2 Bridgewater Road. And she's asking what type of approval process there will be for the occupancy of one suite at 2 Bridgewater Road, which she says is around 800 to 1,000 square feet. I didn't see any specific approvals at Bridgewater Road, 2 Bridgewater Road for daycare and the likes.
Office space.
Yep, it's office space. So we have two choices here. We can require that she come in with a special permit for a permanent use.
She doesn't own that building, though.
She's being offered space in it.
So the owner of the building would have to come in.
Yeah.
Not the tenant.
Well, she can have him sign the application and present. So that would be one option. The other option would be in line with some of the other COVID-related exceptions, if the only way I can term them, that we've been making, that would allow her to occupy that suite until the executive order lifts, if she can comply with health, safety, building, fire, and so on, you know, safety requirements. After the executive order lifts, if she's not out of there within 30 days, or if she's not making a formal application to remain within 30 days, she'd be in violation of the zoning regulations. Again, we've made similar exceptions, this is a bit different flavor, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. I just received it today and get some guidance from you so that I could help guide Marissa in, you know, in terms of what she wants to do.
This is Inez St. James. This is Inez St. James. Is, so the owner of that building, Mr. Fishman, he's okay knowing that it's going to be rented for school or education?
He brought it up. He mentioned, or she may have approached him, but he indicated to her, to her that he had the space and that he was willing to lease. We need to work out the details in terms of its permanency.
Right, right.
So this is Marcy Schwartz, and I would like to voice that I would like you to have the mark to make a decision and to move ahead as fast as possible. People need childcare, and I think it's part of getting the state back to work, and I think it's extremely bad, especially that it is temporary. And when things are lifted, things will change after 30 days. I just, I can't see parents going back to work without daycare for their children, so I'm in absolute support of this.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I agree with Marcy, you know, as long as, obviously, all the safety guidelines are met. I totally agree.
Right.
And this is Matthew Pogson, and I'm weighing in. I also agree that it is acceptable under the current circumstances. Would you like a motion to that of any sort, Mark, or is this enough of a consensus?
Well, I think there's a consensus. I mean, I'm not sure, we haven't heard from everybody.
They'd have to come back with the application, then we would vote on.
Yeah, here's, here's what I would propose. I would communicate with Ms. Pratt and Mr. Fishman and indicate that from a zoning perspective, this could be permitted on a temporary basis until the executive order is lifted, at which time they would have 30 days to vacate the premises or apply or make formal application to the commission for a change in use, which would involve a parking analysis, use analysis, and everything that comes along with a formal change of use application. And in addition, they would still need to meet all the health, safety, building, and fire code requirements that would ensure safety of the occupants. And I would get that in writing from them, just to sort of lock it down.
So just so that we have a consensus from the commission, that's really what Mark needs to go forward with. If they choose to make an application, that's when we would have a motion and a second and a vote.
Sounds good, sounds reasonable.
Anything else on the planners?
Just one note of information. We want to make you aware of the fact that there's been a cease and desist issued for Plant 17 on Farmington Avenue. It's 1179, thank you, Farmington Avenue. And there have been some, you know, it's in an earth excavation zone, but the buyer that came in didn't file for a site plan. He indicated that he was just going to be doing some stockpiling, bringing some stuff in from jobs, taking it out, selling it. And he got in there and did a boatload of work. He excavated some major acreage, you know, it's, it's, what did they say?
10 acres.
Yeah, 10 roughly. Let's just say 8 to be safe, I'm pretty, but there's been some wetlands impacts and some tree removal, and so there's been a cease and desist or issue for both wetlands and for planning and zoning. And we want you to be aware of it because it, you know, it's a pretty big issue, and you may be dealing with it as we move forward. We don't know what they were thinking. You know what, and I don't want to make any representations, but, because I'm just not sure. But, so the cease and desist for wetlands has been issued. We're now working on the cease and desist for planning and zoning. If it was a small item, which we have on a daily basis, it seems, I wouldn't bring it to your attention, but for the fact that it's, you know, approaching 10 acres, I thought it was significant. We didn't want you to hear it from anyone else.
Thank you.
What is the address again, Mark?
1179 Farmington Avenue, it's the old Connecticut Sand and Stone, previously owned by Roger Tofflin.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Very time out, yep.
Mark, if you have a minute, Mike, can you just pull that up on the computer?
Yeah. Give me a second, Mike.
I know you mentioned cease and desist is in place. Did they actually stop doing what they were doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a large bend in the river where Connecticut Sand and Stone did all their mining. This is the property here, and let's get there, yeah. So the one that's in red right now, much of the excavation took place in this area here? They were, they were, I mean, the site really can't be excavated anymore without going into the river. The intent, even though it's in the earth excavation zone, doesn't give them the right to wholesale, change grades without a site plan or impact wetlands, and I don't think our Wetlands Commission would ever give them permission to do that. So it's a rather significant operation in this area here.
Okay, thank you, Mark, I appreciate that.
No worries.
And who's the current owner?
Mizzy Construction, Stanley Majerski, I believe.
Yep.
All right, hearing no more planners reports, I call for the minutes, please.
Okay, this is Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve minutes of the May 11th, 2020 Town Planner and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second?
Marcy, what's that, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Thank you. You are adjourned.
Thanks.